Five to eight, two thousand twenty-five, four P M. First item of business is the approval of minutes for our June tenth, two thousand twenty-five meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes as per.
I have a motion.
I'll second.
Do I have any comments, any questions, any concerns? Fairly none, all fair to the motion say aye. If they close, no, motion passes. First item of whole business is a public hearing for Victoria Baker of Apple Baker Studios. She requests you to rezone five twelve T Street, formerly the Girls Club from R three to P R Professional Residential, for the purpose of having an art studio and future antique mall at that location. This request is to rezone that parcel the building sits on and the parcel for the parking lot. Victoria?
Yes.
Would you talk to us, please?
Yes, sir.
Would you come to the podium and tell us what you had planned there? And you have signed in?
Yes, okay, thank you. Well, it's pretty basic what we plan to do with it. We don't want to change any of the structure of the building, any of the gymnasium floor, anything upstairs, because we're going to keep that intact, just in case the community would like to turn that back into a gym later. But we plan on antique mall in the upstairs and part of the downstairs, and an art studio in the basement as well, that will be sectioned off to be its own separate business with an entrance at the back.
Could you tell us about that art studio?
So, it's kind of twofold. I have an area that I want to give classes to students that would be in the area that would like to take classes, maybe students that are homeschooled. I've taught children, I've taught adults, painting, drawing, sculpting, ceramics, whatever they want to learn. I've come to work with them and just kind of bring some of that to the community. And then I also have a small body art business that is just me and it's, I keep it very low key. And I would like to put my office there. I currently have an office on the square here and I've been operating for about four years and I've been very successful. I have a lot of clientele, but I keep it very low key and it's just one client at a time.
And what kind of artwork do you do? Do you do oil painting, do you do sketching, do you do chalk?
I do everything.
Everything?
So, yep. And I was an art major in college. I, my, one of my plans was to teach college art and just kind of sidetrack, but I have degree in art and I can teach just about anything.
You mentioned antique mall. I recall last month you said this was down the road that you were planning on that. Are you planning on doing an antique mall in there immediately?
I would like, I'd like to put that in there as soon as possible.
And you also mentioned to us, we talked to you about parking space?
Yes.
And what, could you tell us about that?
Well, we do have some parking there in that lot, but I also made an agreement with the Help You Hear people to be able to use their parking lot.
With who?
The Help You Hear, the business right there on the corner. So, we do have an agreement that they would let us use that lot, because most of their people park up front and they only have one or two cars for staff that park in the back. So, they said that we can use that lot.
It's a pretty big lot.
It is a lot, a big lot, yes.
I've got, I've got a quick question for you. On your antique, is it going to be restricted for you or are you going to have spaces?
No, it's going to be spaces available.
Where you rent them out?
Yes.
Do you own from the building north to Fifth Street? Or is there another strip in there that belongs to someone else?
That parking lot belongs to someone else. So, and then we're in between that parking lot and a gentleman that owns a verbo, a vacation house right next to us. But we own the building, the parking lot, and a little bit of a easement behind the gentleman's house. That's it, that's in the yard.
Do you have any idea how many cars you can park there?
In my parking lot, I want to say we figured about fourteen. In the Help You Hear parking lot, it could be several. I'd probably say.
I'd say one.
About one, yeah. I don't expect that there will be more than probably five patrons in the business at one time. It's not a business that's usually, you know, jam packed with good people. So, I wouldn't expect that many at one time. I'm going to think maybe half of them.
The antique mall might fill all the large crowd under art?
Yeah. The art studio would be a small room or one-on-one. It would be very small, because I can't handle however many people at once on that, so.
Anyone else have any questions?
Antique mall going to be upstairs or downstairs?
Oh, half of it.
Do you think this has some areas here? I'm just kind of curious. So, it's been a while since I've been in the building, but I remember it's forward, there being a lot of restroom issues and all that stuff. Is that often?
There are several places for upstairs downstairs. So.
Do you go out and work on that?
Yes, yeah, there was, I did only five, five floors downstairs, so, yeah.
Could you explain a little more about the body art stuff, please?
Okay, um, like I said, it's just me and I operate by a hundred calling. It's very low key. As of right now, I'm only working on clients that I've, I've been working on that have large pieces. And I've been told that a lot of people are very happy with my work, because I keep it very modest, very, I, I don't advertise a lot. I don't have big flashy signs. I, I really don't want that kind of attention. I just like to be able to provide a service, a safe service to people in town. The ninety percent of my clients are women who maybe are comfortable going in some other establishments. And they really enjoy coming to me because they feel comfortable, they feel like they're being taken care of, which I kind of pride myself on, so.
Thank you.
Would, would body art, in my language, be attached to art?
Yes, sir.
Body piercing?
I am not currently doing body piercing. It is something that my son is interested in that, but as of currently, I don't do that. But I am, I, I do have the license in this county to have that if I need to.
Thank you. Is there anyone here who would like to speak for, for this?
Can I provide some information for that? You asked about parking spaces. By my calculation, she has about fifteen current parking spots. She has room on her own property to expand that more. There was a question about the restrooms. The restrooms, she's not doing anything, so she doesn't really have to be ADA compliant, but she has a lift that has been at one point serviced or inspected by the state. And I think she needs to, has to have some repairs to get up and down the stairs for that purpose. And then she is going to add a handicap ramp, some of the things that she doesn't have to do, but she's going to do. You asked about the antique mall. Under the P R section, the way it currently is, the only thing, if you pass this in the council of prison, the only thing that she would be able to do is the studio thing at present moment.
She cannot have antique mall under the prison?
That's correct.
So, you would have to come back to us for an antique mall?
We would, we would need to modify, you as the board would need to modify or have a resolution to the city council to change some of the things that are in the P R section. And I think I alluded last time, some of those areas, not just for her, but it benefits other areas in town that are not currently zoned properly and need to be, so.
I think there's some concern about this building being turned into maybe a bar or a tavern. That is not my intention. I do not want that. And I intend on keeping this building for a very long time. It's, it's a family business and we intend to keep this building for a very long time. I have no desires to do that. So, we were looking at this form of, to be able to keep the building from being able to be a bar or tavern.
But you do understand why he said that you cannot have.
Yes, and that, that for me is a concern, because I, I do want to get the antique mall. I have quite a few people who are interested in the goods in there, so.
As long as you understand that under what we're doing here today, you cannot do that.
So, do we know about how long it would be before that would be a potential?
I am prepared next month to present to the planning commission the resolution and we can have that discussion, but then it would be for the council, it would be three more months. I mean, it would take a change. And, I mean, it takes, it takes the planning commission approving it and saying to the council and the council would take two months, so.
Kevin, does that require a public hearing at that?
It would, yeah. And that's why we're not having it today. There wasn't enough time to get notice out. And I have to do, I need to check to see how do you do the public notice? Can we just, I mean, the state law only says that you have to publish it in the paper. Well, nobody reads the newspaper, so.
What is a newspaper?
Exactly. So, I mean, I want to be able to put it on the city's Facebook page. It's not feasible to send out certified letters to, in all the different P R zones. You'd probably be talking three hundred parcels at nine dollars a piece. So, it's not very feasible to do that. So, I mean, you'd have to get it, would have to get it out there by W B I W. I still have to do it by the, or by the Times Mail, but on the city's website and just Facebook page and whatever else to get it out there. This is going to be for discussion. And we probably, we'd need to hold it at a different location.
So, do you know specifically the verbiage of what, I mean, this is probably for next meeting, I guess, that we're going to be talking about this, but just give us a heads up. The verbiage you want to add to the.
Yes, yes. I, I would like to see, based upon what we talked about last month, there are certain areas in town that are zone P R that only allow, if you look at your list there for what P R allows, it does not allow for single-family homes. There are empty lots down around the old Dunn Hospital that if someone were to buy that lot and they want to build a house, they'd have to rezone it. So, they'd have to go through that, it's only two hundred dollars, but I mean, they have to go through three months of waiting to be able to build a house, to be able to get that rezoned, be able to put a house where you should be able to do it, or even for a duplex. So, I would like to see the P R zone, I like to add, see it added, that there be single-family homes and duplexes. Because currently condominiums and multifamily are the only thing that's currently available in the P R zone. To eliminate some of the, well, Fifteenth and L is a gas station. It's been a gas station for a hundred years. It's currently a convenience store, but neither one of those should be there by zoning. Never should have been allowed, but the zoning came in after that gas station, so it was just exempt. But, so, I would also like to add retail to the P R zone, because you have some areas in town that are currently retail spaces that technically not zoned for. That eliminates some of the concerns that the board has addressed previously. I think the lot behind Auto or Advance Auto that was currently is residential and they wanted to rezone the commercial and, you know, the neighbors were afraid what might go in it. And I understand that, I respect that, I do. But it also, you're limiting, what can you do with the retail space?
Am I correct that this is what you're talking about, which is?
I am, that's what it currently is, yeah.
Okay, under the P R zoning currently, you are allowed to put condominiums, multiple family dwellings, boarding or lodging house, professional offices and studios, which is what you're talking about, schools except trade and technical school, general homes, clinics, nursing home, hospital, churches, government park, or recreational facility, essential services, accessory uses, and TV reception desk. That's what's permitted there, is that?
And everything you talked about as far as art studio and the tattoo studio operation, all fall in professional offices?
I think it's your, I guess that depends on what your definition of a studio is, but I mean, I, it meets the definition of studio that I looked up under, you know, Webster's dictionary.
The only thing that she currently would not be able to do is the digital?
She would not be able to do retail space, no.
So, when I originally applied, I applied for commercial space that would allow for that. So, is that off the table now?
Well, we had, you and I talked about that. And I know how the board feels about taking residential and turning it into commercial. And the P R was kind of a compromise so that I could be able to at least be able to do something. So, I mean, if you want to pull the application from it being a P R and you want to try to do the business,
But that starts, that starts my clock over and I.
It would.
Yeah.
I, I, I don't know, I guess we could, you'd like to do, I kind of, maybe I haven't had a debate about it yet, so I can see myself changing my mind personally, but I kind of tend to think, or Kevin's got to want to go with the P R district. Makes sense to me. I think it simplifies a lot and kind of back to the single-family home issue, probably something that we can deal with that and it kind of solves the problems there too. And I'm speaking, I'm on the city council as well, so I would, I would be with people that would be running on that eventually. So, I think I have to display you what you should do there, but I guess for anyone else on the board or the council, but at the base level right now, just looking at it, it makes sense to me. So, I think what would that's worth?
I just provide the information. It's up to board to decide and it's up to you whether or not you want to proceed now or if you wish to hold back and try to do it as.
I would like to proceed.
So, the only thing, if, if this passes and you go from here to the city council, and the city council historically takes two months to passes. They do the first and second reading and then the next month they do the third reading. So, you're talking like that before you'd be able to do things.
Yeah.
So, as long as you know, okay. All right, people here, do you have any more questions for us?
I don't, do you have any questions?
Okay. We are not, we just can't certain that, right, the room?
I understand.
Okay, all right, okay. Are there people here who would like to speak for or against this? Yes, and could, may I, would you come and tell me who you are?
My name's Martha Bates and I live right across the street from the Girls Club. I'm actually concerned in the neighborhood. First of all, I'd like to say that I really like Kevin's idea of trying to add the retail space to this versus what she would be going for later, which would be a B one. And I'm totally against that, because that one would, if we get a B one, as you know, as listed there, cameras and anything you know. And while I respect that she says she's planned to own this for a long time, I've met, talked with them, very nice people, would love to have them on my neighborhood, but I have concerns, plans change. And, you know, something could happen and then someone has to buy it and we're going to be stuck if anything could go in there. So, I could say the neighborhood is definitely going to be one, as collecting. So, of course, we had issues about the parking, but that does seem to be resolved, well, earlier today. We also have questions about our property values and property tax. Would that change if that business goes in there?
Not yours. Wouldn't bother yours.
What about the person right across the street?
Nope, the only one that would change, the only one that tax would change would be that decent property, correct?
Okay.
Yeah, and it's based upon and however the assessor's office assesses your properties, yeah.
Okay, so, I guess my main concern here is if the board does not decide to do what Kevin has suggested by changing that to the single duplex, uh, single-family homes, duplex, and retail spaces to make that into the P R residential, then it would go to B one. So, for whatever it's worth, I would much rather see that amended to include the retail space than for her to come back later and board a person B one, which that would be her own recourse. And exactly what the neighborhood has been fearful of is that, you know, this meeting today would say, okay, you can do this. And then because that's not everything she wants to do, come back and, you know, change it further. So, I would request that you consider Kevin's proposal and definitely not even consider B one. It is a residential area and it's my home. I've lived there twenty-five years. I hope to live there for the remainder of my life and I do not want it to be carried into a business zone. But I could live with antique mall that was not interruptive and, you know, and the art center. I mean, hopefully it will be low key, but those are my requests. And I, like I said, I don't speak for everyone, but certainly aren't a good article group. We kind of talked about this and that's how we do. But I, so, do you have anything you want to add?
Martha, may I respond to one item for you? If, if we pass, if this passes, someone else buys a property, that's all they can do. What, what is?
I understand that, but.
She said, I think your comment was that if someone else buys it, they could do something, they can only do that.
No, I understand that. If you pass, if you pass it to a B one, then they could.
That's not even, that's not even our consideration today.
I know it's not, but it really is in the long term, because she, her own, you know, she just said that she's going to come back. And if this doesn't, if this doesn't get an agenda, as Kevin's asking for, to put a retail space in there, she will be back and ask for B one, to put in her antique shop and other things that she wants to have. So, that's my concern. And I'm just saying, I would like for you all to consider that proposal and not, you know, I just want to be made aware.
If that happens, we'd have to go through the whole process again and have a whole nother public hearing.
I understand.
So, so it's really not an issue at this point.
I disagree, it is an issue, because if she gets approved under this and then she has already stated she will be back, then the issue will be, do you deny or agree for her to have B one? So, it is an issue. I want to make my voice heard that we would like you to consider Kevin's proposal to avoid us getting to that extent. Anybody have any other questions for me?
I would just make one comment. If it would turn into another discussion about going to a B something, that would start the whole process again and the neighborhood would certainly have the opportunity to come in and present their case yet again. This isn't, if it.
I understand.
So.
I'm just thinking for two, they made an investment and she wants, you know, to put this in there. And so, I'm thinking, as I said, listen, to me, and it's really not my city, but to me, that is the best opportunity for everyone to all to make it, you know, work out there. And obviously, it would be good taxes are going for in our community. That's all I.
I, I don't, I think, you know, kind of the way we're trying to work this out is the exact way that you intend. And that's, you know, Kevin, obviously Kevin's vision is the way we can kill multiple birds in one stone here. And I think that's just what we did. And then back to your, you know, concern about your property value, you know, again, none of this, necessarily, you know, affects any of that, but I will say that I think everybody in the group agrees we want some money in that building, a thriving business or something to be there instead of just sitting there.
Yeah, they've already made some nice, they cleaned it up, not the back yet, but they've cleaned it up and they've made some progress with the building and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Angie?
Hi, Byron Lloyd. My name's Angie Jones. I disagree with you on property value, location, location, location. Going real to the town. And I have it directly across the street. And I pay a lot of property taxes right now, more than I would like to, but that's okay. Okay, so I disagree with your assessment on that. I'm also concerned every time the Girls Club changes, I've lived there over thirty years. I'm in this group every single time, no matter how many times I've been in here. And every single time it's been a burden. It's a worry for us that we have to worry about what's going to go into that building, because we just don't know. We spend our harder money taking care of our property and then if we get something in there that becomes like cells that possibly terrible, then we're stuck across the street from us. I mean, I, I'm happy that they're here, but I also worry for my, my safety, what's going on and what's going to happen with that building. And it's easy, you know, for people to say, oh, get me so happy, that's what it is. Well, yeah, that's easy to say too, but guess what? You're not living across the street from them. So, I mean, those are some of my concerns. I'm not, you know, not happy, but I'm also not aggravated, I just don't want to be, I just want to have peace living there. I don't want traffic coming and going all the time. And I really don't want retail in a residential area. I'm kind of surprised that there's not in your bio something about how many feet or something you could put in residential area. That kind of shocks me, that there's nothing like that. Well, I understand that you need to make money for the city, get some income in, but also I'm going to read a thing about the residents and what we have to put up across the street from, so that's my feeling on it. Any questions?
Anyone else here want to speak to this, for it or against it? All right, the close is part of the public hearing, man. And, how's amendment, what do you wish to do?
As it stands and as it's been presented to this council today, I believe my feeling is that the neighborhood is not totally against it. There are some concerns that have been voiced and I'll make a motion to approve the rezonings of P R.
I have a motion. I'll second. And we have a second. Before we vote, I want to ask, you sent letters out to eleven people. Have you heard from any of them?
I spoke with Martha Stella.
No one else?
And I spoke to, prior to the letters, Mr. Miller. I can tell you that everybody, I did check and everybody received their letter, with the exception of the former, or the owners of the laundromat, they never picked their letter up, so.
Okay, we have a motion to approve this and send it to the city council. We have a second. Any comments on it? I would like to say, we, we went through this, this building several years ago with the proposal for it to be Becky's place. And we wrestled about it for a long time, many of you were on the board at that time. We all thought at that time, that was a good thing that needed to be done, but the neighborhood did not want that in there. I am a staunch proponent of people build and buy their houses in a certain location, because there's something that attracted them to that location. I'm, I haven't heard a compelling argument that this is the location that a studio and perhaps even an antique mall needs to go with the plethora of empty buildings that we have in town that are already zoned for that very kind of thing. I, I understand the neighborhood, there, there is some reluctance, but we didn't have a lot of comments from the letters. The people that have come to, to address us are uneasy about it. And I fall into that same category. I'm somewhat uneasy about it also. So, that's just my two cents. Any other comments? All fair to the motion say aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
All right. The decision to chair it or the motion passes and this will go to the city council at their next meeting and then we'll move forward with that. It is interesting to me, Kevin, that you can put multiple family dwellings here, but you can't put a single-family dwelling. Then that's interesting to me. It doesn't make, I understand what you're saying when I look at that, that's quite interesting. Yes.
It's that, my name's Florence La, and that's what I'm here about, looking at one of the lots that's zoned, the P R, is the motion you guys just made to get single-family added?
No.
Do that?
The motion is to approve this request that Victoria has made to.
Is that going to be covered today?
No.
No, that's a whole nother discussion. I was told that it was.
No, it's a whole nother discussion. It might be next meeting, might be.
Uh, it might be next meeting, might be, might be. We don't know.
I was told that that was gonna be covered today to add, to change the twenty-fourth street.
No, no, that is not on the agenda for today. No. I, I mean, I, I had a brief discussion with the mayor about the, what I wanted to do and we briefly discussed it at the last meeting, but it takes, it takes a whole public meeting to do that and it's not on the agenda to do it today.
Well, I was told it would be.
It probably be three months, correct? Because it would have to come to us to be approved to go to a public hearing. Then whatever we want to do after a public hearing, you know, go to the city council to meet. So we're gonna talk maybe four months.
Right. That's why I was told it was gonna be at this meeting today, so to start it off. I don't really got that information. Your office.
I've never, the only one in my offices who even knows about it is me and I've never told that to anyone.
I talked to the secretary and I don't know who's the other person. Somebody else was there and.
Well, I apologize for that. No, it's not on the agenda for today and it never was planned on to be on the agenda for today.
Okay, well, I don't either. Good to see you.
Well, thanks.
All right, the next item on our whole business is the public hearing for the Williams A. Poling Trust. Then that was by minor division. They're requesting to divide, uh, lot numbers into two parcels. Lot one will be fifteen point five acres and lot two will be twenty-five acres of Meadow Lake community. Ultimately, the HOA will retain the lake, lot one, and drainage way as it serves the entire community for storm water control. Cory, out.
So, uh, yeah, the, for the purpose of this minor subdivision, we're just looking for the future. The, the lake area, it is, has always been the, being the drainage area for the entire community. Um, and there's always been plans to keep that set aside. So this is just a step in that direction. Um, there's nothing particularly of a moment, but protects the, the pond, the, the lake itself. And then there are drains that go down into that. Um, I mean, right now, the way we will not change hands, it will still be in the Poling Trust. This is just setting, we have to divide it out at some point and this is a good point in time to do that. Um, this gives us chance to get the input. I'm kind of following some previous plans on this. Um, I, I think the, the boundary on this will wobble just a little bit, but the acres are just gonna be the same within, say, a tenth of an acre or so. So the, the map that he showed is along the existing codes, that, that, uh, boundary is set. So that's the existing boundary behind the houses. And, um, this is all owned to R one. So anything out there that would ever go in is gonna be similar to what's there, uh, subject to some sort of zoning change. So, you know, if we just had a, any input of, you know, if there's any minor changes, we still have time to do that. I, I've asked that we, we not, we're not presenting it for signatures today, but just input if there's anything that, that I, I've not heard yet. And I, I will be out there doing some of the work here in the next few weeks, so we'll be able to interact on something there. That's first. We'll have two, two packed parcels and then eventually we can do the, the long-term plan, uh, which has always just been to keep that for drainage, for existing and future development. Uh, which we have several areas still to be developed in that Meadow Lake area, so it's critical that this stays separated. It's part of the stormwater management plan put in place twenty-seven years ago, so.
Questions? Anyone have a question? Cory, you, you mentioned that with this split approved, the homeowners association would control the, the lot or the lake. Who controls it now?
Well, right now it will just be, it will still be underneath the Poling Trust. It's just that, that is the long-term plan. It would have to stay with the community. So by default, that, that would end up with HOA at some point.
I, I guess my question was leading to the question, is the HOA aware of this that they may be inheriting the lake somewhere down the road?
Right. And, and that, that, that whole discussion has, regardless whoever maintains it, they're required to keep that lake there. I mean, there's no getting around that. And that's part of this is just to be sure that we never hit up and somebody got a piece of the lake or something. Um, this keeps control of the lake all with lot one. And being underneath the stormwater drainage plan already, I mean, there's really no way to ever say, oh, now we've got a lake for a property. It's, uh, but, but I, you know, as far as getting there, that, you know, that sound broke, definitely. The, this is just a good time to do this, get it divided up. And just doing that, cleaning up a lot of pieces up there, from right away purchased in other areas and. When something sits this long, sometimes you just have to do some maintenance with legal descriptions and plans to keep everything up to date.
Do your people have a question? Yes.
I, I personally, I don't know. I'm, I'm waiting to see what all should set.
Well, I guess my question was, I never received the letter to be here, so I don't know who got the letters and who didn't. Uh, and we looked right, overlooked the, the lake. Uh, McGinnis is right on the lake. They didn't get a letter, uh, so I had to find out from my neighbors. So that, that makes it a rub and roll. We're gonna kind of, I wasn't able to see what, what is this all about. Uh, the lot one, is that expanding? What direction does that expand as, as far as that? Here, this is it on an aerial photo. So basically it comes from, from the road, Meadow Lake Road. You, you can see the drainage, drainage ways that come down in, into the lake from the north. It, it keeps all of that drainage in there. So, so, so this would stay with the, the HOA? Eventually, yes. Okay. I mean, this is, it could be outside of the body. But if, if, if it's zone R one, so if, if it ever was subdivided, it would be similar to what is already there. Obviously, the, the development company wouldn't have to put it up with the same evidence that you guys. Now, why is this section, why is there so much more here than what's on this side? Why can't that be?
It looks very thin.
Now, it's very close to the water there. We can cut a little, that, that's part of the common areas to see. I mean, really on the other side of the lake, one reason we don't want to put it way over because then that, that, that does open up an option. Let's just say if there's enough room there to put a house, I don't know what happens in ten years, twenty years, you know?
But if it's zoned, if it, if it's supposed to fall within the regulation of the size requirements for these sections, I don't know how that can, if they, if they, if they have to follow, you have to have a twenty-five hundred square foot home, X amount of acreage. You can't squeeze other houses in between.
And, and that's why we're trying to stay, like, we want, definitely need room for maintenance and things on the lake, but we want it. Yeah. And also, on, if anything was done on the other side, there, there, there has to be an easement there, uh, to get to the sewer and all have to be drainage easements. So, so nothing is going to be built like right up against the back property lines. That wouldn't be allowed even by, there's setbacks in place under R one.
That does though, I don't know if everybody else has seen that. Have you guys seen? If you could show them the, how close proximity the, uh, that one sign is to the pond?
And, and basically this has been reviewed before. This was actually passed as a subdivision fifteen years ago. It was just never reported and actually separated. So we've been through this process once. So this is our house. This is the, this is the McGinnis's house right here.
Okay. And so the red over.
Yeah, we have all that, we have all that hill now, but this one here is, uh, it's kind of pretty close to the shore of the.
There, you see the pond? Okay, you guys have that. Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure. But yeah, that does seem very, very close. I don't know if that's, that, if we could have more.
We can do a little bit. Some of that is the terrain because we, we do have to come to lot two, a developable lot. So if you cut too much into that, then you basically destroy the value of lot two in the future. Uh, but I don't know what that number is. I mean, my, my, yeah, it is say thirty to fifty feet from the, the. And I want to see exactly where the pond is. This is a twenty, twenty-one aerial photo currently. So that pond may have grown up and that, that's all I'll live with before I bring the final form. Cause right now there's a slope of just grass and then the farm fields kind of what's up there. So I'm trying to visualize how far down that grass slope is or potentially could be a house in. Yeah, so that, and that's kind of hard to tell because that's gonna depend on the, on how that's developed in the future. I mean, the, the homes that would be geared there, you know, you can talk about, they're already more stringent, um, requirements, uh, for that happen, size of houses, but that will be up to the development company eventually. I, you know, I, I'm sure they're not gonna let departments and things like that. That's why it's seven one in there, you know, R ones make it, um, similar to what's out there. But I, I can't really speak what the future is. What, what was proposed before were very small lots. And that's why that was never reported. It, it wasn't going to match the rest of the community. So, uh, but what's on there right now, again, that, that's what was originally planned and that, um, that was based on the pond location at the time. But if we can come up with a number, I, I, I think between thirty and fifty feet though is really an ideal because that allows for utilities or things like that, anyways. But it also keeps, again, if something happens later on, if somebody else gets a hold of, would get a hold of that, if you had enough room to squeeze the house in there or make that a backyard, you know, if you keep that small, you kind of force that issue. Would be my goal.
Cause you're saying right now it's R one, residential one?
Yes.
But it is being farmed at this point. So that's allowed in R one because it looks across the street from this or also being farmed, which is great for us where I have to skim.
Yeah.
But is that something that, I'm assuming that that's gonna be sold at some point in time to close the Poling Trust? So at that point, can most people do, they can farm it or?
I.
Get cows on it or?
Well, that I, I don't know. I mean, right now it's supposed to be been planted with corn and, and.
And hasn't been for a couple of years since we've been there. It's always been.
Been there since I was all in corn.
That's a farm sort of thing? Yeah. Yeah.
I don't know if like cattle would be allowed under R one, but that twenty-some acres, I don't know. That's kind of.
But cause you've got, what, thirty-five acres up there in part two, correct? Twenty-five or fifteen and one or twenty-five?
Twenty-five, I think.
Twenty-five. But there are thirty-five lovely lots up there, which means it's less than an acre a piece, so.
Well, that, that, well, that's what I, I said before, there was original plan that was small lots like that and that really does not affect it there.
I mean, what, what would they have covered?
It, it would be at the lift station, yeah. Though, so eventually, there, there will still be an easement across the lift station if something is done in the future.
So you can take a, two line across the lake?
It would, it would go across, it would go down the, the southeastern side, down probably below the dam or something like that. We just have to, well, that would be part of the development for that. Or there's an existing line, as you come down the hill towards the, the pond, towards the lake from the road, there's an existing line right there that can also be tapped into, or manholes. And the, the line actually goes around the west side of the pond. Sorry. Relate the capacity of what that lift station can handle in terms of the number of homes that we're gonna put up there. It's massive. It was designed for like three or four hundred homes. So it was something, basically everything that's out, is out there now is barely enough to keep that pump station going. It, it's really supposed to run more often. So it was overdesigned. A company out of Bloomington designed that. So it's, uh, they, they did a very good job. They planned it for a lot.
So really all we're doing at this point is separating one from two. And then down the road, whoever buys that whole section, they're not allowed to come back to see how it can be plowed.
Yeah. And, and, and it's possible that, that lot one is, you know, in the future, lot one could be reconfigured. If, if that gets to the point that it's going to an HOA and there's that much that's been developed, you may not need all of lot one at some point.
It was.
But, yeah, that's the thing. I don't think, it doesn't really seem developable to me, but, um, but the lake is critical. That, that is, that's like catching all the storm water, retains it. So that needs to stay a part of the development for the long term.
That's the other concern is that because of all the development of Fellowship Drive and everywhere that pond is really filled in. And there's some talk about maybe dredging that pond. But if you're developing up on that hill, that's all about coming down into that pond too.
Well, and I don't make a comment about that because we've been up there eighteen years. So we pretty much, there were no homes of Fellowship Drive. So since those homes have gone in, the culvert that goes across Bloom Meadows has basically been falling apart. I've contacted the city about it before. Uh, there's actually, you can look in the holes that's, that has been created. You can see the actual gas line. I contacted the center point. Nobody, they filled, the city were coming in and filled it in. We get so much water there, it collapses again. So the holes are, are about this big. If you fit a person or two in it. And that's a concern is that you mentioned that the drainage plan was done thirty years ago, but I think what we've seen up Fellowship Drive, it's not adequate in terms of what the drainage, the, you know, plan has been. Well, and, and what's on Fellowship, that was taken into consideration. Now, some of the others, as those develop, like, uh, right, just south of the church, that whole area. If that is built, that water will have to, ha, have to be contained mostly on site and slowed down before it turns off. It's not, I mean, like right now, if you put a road in there, it would just wash out straight down. And that's what we've seen with Fellowship. Yeah, it, it'll have to have a, a detention pond there. That, that part of the development, um, south of the church would need a detention pond to keep some of that. Um, some of what's on Fellowship, it's, yeah, it's kind of developed up from a, a long-term plan. And I don't think it was adequate. I don't, I don't think the, the drainage plan that was expected and handled with that was not handled correctly. And allowed us to build right behind us, they are constantly having to deal with major drainage issues, um, in their home. And luckily we're high enough that it doesn't affect our property. But the culvert there, that grows, you're gonna lose that road some, somewhere down the road because of, because of so much drainage that it, it can't handle. And that's a concern for developing that is the same, and it's, again, it's a different slope, different area. But I think that whole drainage plan that was developed for that entire area is not adequate. And, and that's something I, I can bring that up to the development company. You don't think, I, there may be some things they can do. I, I don't know. I've been in multiple different places of this as a surveyor and, also we get larger arrangements than we have due to the vast, that, that document. So a lot, a lot of things once they're there, then you have to find new ways to, to fight that.
And I, and I can speak, I mean, I don't know. So I, I obviously put up this, this property as well. I don't know whether I should abstain from voting on this for that reason. I was gonna ask you before we go to that point. Um, but I, I don't know if any of this is connected or related or it's just we got more arrangements or whatever, but I know the bottom of my property, which is all mine, something that I wrote there for, my dad built the house in two thousand and one for pretty much eighteen, nineteen years, never flooded. And I have at least a flood minute every year down there, at least one.
To get that water, heat from the pond.
Correct.
From that pond, and we're talking about here, we've been out there since, I didn't like it.
Yeah, I know, Mike.
And, uh, I mean, the water would come so fast and go over the dam into the little creek, little button, your property.
And I didn't know there was such a road that, or if there was something downstream that was causing issues?
Well, the pond, like they're saying, the water drains down there. About a four-H train and eight after that. You know, so it's, it was watching.
Yeah, it's only one that's like, literally like a.
It just floods across there. The culvert on the dam, which is pretty big, can't handle it. So they're, at even, we're just sitting around, can't handle it. So it comes over the top of the dam. And.
Flows down.
Floods down for you. Floods the creek, that'll last over a road.
Which triples all the way down. Sometimes even, oh, it's part of. Which triples all the way down. Sometimes even Otis Park.
Yeah, and it floods that there. So it comes and it starts at Fifty-Eighth Highway.
Right.
That pond is the lowest point. From Ryan Griffin's house. All Fifty-Eighth Highway to pass the church. That all comes to the pond. That's the lowest point I've been. And I got videos scared. I've seen Bill Meadows parking under water where I've been, oh, can't handle. But they're talking about the other problem, different problem. But that ain't what we're talking about here, by the way.
Right, right.
We just got a little never been.
Well, if there is, if there is a future, if that is so, if I had to say across from this lot two, there will be a stormwater management plan for that. In any of the future, that that's something you didn't see. One year ago, a lot, there was a massacre and then things kind of got built. So, uh, right now, you know, the contractors are responsible for that as they construct. The developer is responsible for an initial plan.
So do they, do they present that to the community, uh, prior to doing all this?
It would, i- if a, like, if that lot two was built, they would have to come in, that stormwater plan would be a part of that, that plan set.
Yes. Okay, so we get to, we get to be, we get to hear what's, what their plans. Okay.
Well, we went to meeting, I don't know, it was pre-COVID. You might have been there where.
He was.
Dad drained the water from across the street from us with that cornfield is. Yeah, by Mike's place and and not through there.
And I've seen your property, the the water up on your property.
Uh, it'll, yeah, it'll, it'll flow.
I know we've looked at a few areas where we already have an existing culvert, like you're saying, it's a burden and. In future, they got, just talked about, we're gonna have to put like a detention area before that to slow it down now. And you've got, and now on Fifty-Eighth, you have a seventy-three acre lot for sale. That if you build on that, that's just gonna add even more to that water that's gonna go to the exact same place. So we've got, there's a major issue and if we develop all these areas, we're gonna have a major issue down there. Well, and that's good. The change statewide is about five years ago, they kind of have gone to almost zero culverts. What what's on your property has to stay there, almost be the same, run opposite it was originally. That it needs to be pace, you could be advised with a certain percentage of extra. But I'm starting to see detention ponds now here. We've seen about nowhere for ever bigger areas, but. We're gonna see more and more detention areas. Now, where that part was just done slowly. I mean, it's it's. But they're still gonna fill up the crazy rain events. To, but in certain. But maybe it's worth trying to be that. I don't have ideas, but I keep.
Basically, the corner. How many of the residents in our area got letters?
Thirteen. Three people got letters.
Thirteen.
Just everybody that, everybody that touches that property, you see one, so what is your address?
Seven, wait, Bloom Meadows, we're right by the gate.
I'm sorry, what is it?
Seven, two, eight, Bloom Meadows, we're right by. By the gate, I'm aware.
What's, what's the name? I'm sorry. If you don't, if you don't touch this property, I didn't send you a note. And I'll. I don't, so I don't know who's, I have a list here. Nobody's noticed.
I have a list of who's got list.
Are the Laslows on there?
You don't touch the property.
Okay. There were several around the block that, uh.
They're across the street from the property, but they don't touch the property.
No, and they. And they had received a certified letter and as if we didn't get one, they didn't get one and they do touch the property. And, um, so.
The Lesbys.
The Lesbys, yeah, they they live across the street. They received the letter from the pond. We're gonna shake.
Yeah, we're. But we're wedged.
It's changed, you know, since that aerial photo. But, yeah, ideally, I I think same fifty feet from, let's say, the typical bank of the pond. That, that's a good guideline. That allows dozers in if there was regaining. At, you know, maintenance access. And and that's enough. I mean, somebody can send up the property line and, you know, fish into it, things like that. Unless. I'm assuming if that was developed, it would become part of the community. Be my.
That is a question. I'm part of the, uh, separated apartments. That's a lot of age.
Yeah, that that I I mean. It's part of the visual development. That's all I know.
And what do you mean this now only because like the crisis puts out the COVID impressed?
Uh, basically, this has been, I I I've been popping them for years about doing this. We just, I was doing some other work. I I found a buy Fellowship where Fellowship comes in, we combined some lots there. In not a lot right away, we needed to close the little road. So I came in for that work and I'm like, well, let's start. We started looking. There's a lot of little cleanup areas. Like if you look at the taxes, this shows up as one big parcel says there's sixty-five acres left. There's not that much left. So. That's kind of what triggered all this. It's just paperwork and taxes, trying to see what what's left there.
Corey, I have a question. You didn't adjust anyone else's property line. I mean. Everyone's, everyone that's already purchased property. We haven't, you're not trying to adjust anyone's property.
Correct. Now, I I have talked to either on the east line, which is the old railroad. We may have a slight adjustment there because that railroad is kind of messy. So there may be a cleanup. Piece there. I I I don't know until I get a little bit more information there.
But that would have been something that was in the air at the original time.
Yes, yeah. So, but everything, all it is not affect any of the existing lots, though. I mean, I'll mark up kind of the far four. I I don't plan on marking every single. Corner.
Sure, sure.
It's a problem. We would certainly do that. And we're just all looking at property value for what's gonna happen there. You know, just what's just all said.
Yeah.
And I know we kind of have a personal fault for that, but. Well, and keeping that as far away from that pond as possible. I know you gotta take money out of lots too, but. Well, that's the critical thing. Keep it in R one for now. If it was ever be rezoned. You would come in and be critical then, you know, what are you doing? But the R one, it just al- it almost sets lot sizes. And, again, keeping with the community standards for the house sizes, that it takes a lot. Speak for the company, but they've not sold anything, but they're not. Put those restrictions on so far.
So we're doing subdivision. They.
Yes, yeah.
Are you folks clear?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Are you ready to move forward?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
Uh, hey, uh, since you are involved, I think it would be better for you to stay in this. So, uh, we need a motion as to whether to take this on to the board works or to not take it on to the board works.
Actually, I mean, we, I need to bring this back to you after what the town is.
Okay.
So for a final review, I'll make these adjustments that hopefully at the August meeting would be my.
So you want us to table this at this point?
If you give, yes.
Okay. We're having a motion table.
Sir.
And we have a second. Any discussion on that? Here in that all figure of the motion to table this in our next meeting, say aye. Aye, aye. Those opposed, no. And let the record show that he hasn't stayed from voting on this. Okay? Thank you, people, for coming.
We have a question. So when you guys return for this meeting, uh, and when he gets his specs and everything that he needs to. To go out and survey the properties and such, are we gonna have another, are we gonna have another little meeting? So we, what is going on or is this just you're gonna do it?
Uh, I I guess I'm, I'm over, we do have time on this. We're not on a crunch thing with this development, so. That's not typical, but I don't know.
So it may be well for us to take this off the table at our next meeting, or guys, uh, take it up. Think maybe they ought to have a letter.
Oh, I don't think we typically send out additional letters. I mean, I I can, I can personally commit once we have some information. And talk to you guys a few weeks and then, I guess, if we do do that at Thursday issue, then you can contact the planning office. And then we would, they would have grounds if there's something, not coach, they had grounds to table it again.
So we'd love to have that.
Okay, I just, I just, we like to be aware of what's, you know, the, you know.
And it's not, it is not our goal, our goal.
No, no, I, and I, and I don't have that. I just, we like to have the, we like to be privy to the information.
I should have asked, did you have any comments from the letters you sent out?
I did s- I I had an inquiry, I I think. Um, that's it. Just an inquiry of what was going on. That was it.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. I think you all for, uh, if you don't agree on all of that, it's all this.
August twelfth.
Do you have any questions?
On August twelfth. August twelfth will be the next meeting, assuming that he hasn't done by then. I can't guarantee it's gonna be here. But if you will, uh, there's some changes in the city's website. So if you can follow the city's website, there'll probably be more information provided there. And. Thank you.
You appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Oh, we have new business. I'm guessing that's you. You've had a lot of fun today. Our new business is a preliminary hearing for Sonal Sanders. Twenty-one oh six Thirty-third Street seeking a special exception permit to operate a first salon from our home. Requires the approval of plant commission and then to be heard by the zoning board at a public hearing. Would you like to talk to us, uh, Sanders?
Well, my husband and I just moved to York Trump, and so we own theirs since September. I have a client there's not going for twenty-first and try to find. Both a little bit more than, um, what I've been doing and I'm just, uh, very. Just to try to make this one back over to the home. Where you can sit back off the road, there's plenty of time in our driveway, just keep myself moving. Um, and. I only have one, two clients at max at a time, so. Uh, I have a very full clientele, um, so as far as advertising, I. Don't put any signs or, like, that on. But this is on YouTube, so I guess I'm. Asking you guys if that would be a possibility.
Okay, it's not our decision, the only way to pass on. Again, historically, sometimes we're not wanting to spot something. Or something in residential area. And so the zoning board, some of the zoning board members are sitting on this, uh, commission also. So, uh, if you have any questions for. Yes, I would have one. This, the the twenty-one oh six, is it, yes, twenty-one oh six Thirty-third. Is that on the west side of Washington Avenue or the east side that accesses on the, uh, official road?
It's on the west.
West, so it's directly. Right on, and jet past us.
Oh, yes, it's all kind of long now, okay. Sets down that lane and, yeah. Okay. Anyone else have a question? The reason I hadn't asked, I live at the end. Thirty-third. What do you have? Okay, she can do a jury job with almost looking at her. She did, I didn't have you. Okay, no question. Uh, what do you want to do, commission? Do you want to send this to the zoning board or not? I have moved that we do send this to the zoning board, uh, being on that mission also. I would like to hear what the public has to say. I have a hint of my students of the zoning board. And I have a second. Any further discussion? Here in that all figure, the votes should say aye. Aye, opposed, no, the votes passed. And welcome to Barnes County. Uh, do you have anything for us, Kevin?
That will be the twenty-second at three o'clock. I think you, if you've been out Fifth Street, you've seen that. A lot of has moved quite a bit there. They're still waiting on their, uh, design releases to be able to build. But they have been submitted. We do have a location for the Bell Taco. Say. Maybe I'm lost.
Okay.
They require some plans, so. The. Newshire Uplands project down on Shawnee, they broke ground. So they're maybe starting, they're just clearing right off the roadway and stuff. Um, I think that's about it.
Is that going to be right on thirty-seven or is that?
It is on Shawnee between, uh, Dr. Ross's Heart Center and Holiday.
Okay. I was thinking it's gonna be right out on thirty-seven, but I, it's state board and Valvoline is coming along.
Uh, Valvoline, looks like they're digging some pretty deep holes, get some stormwater moved, so, yeah.
Anyone else have anything you want to bring up?
Question, I know there's some property transferred. There was a property on nineteen hundred block sixteen street. Does that go, it's a hell of a thing. It's sold for like five hundred thousand dollars.
Now, that would be.
If it was.
Would that be the I-NOT?
I don't know. It's called Anderson Uplands Railroad.
The nineteen hundred block would be sixteen from, uh, sixteen from Brownland Way. So it would have to be.
Could have been, uh, with the sheriff. That used to be the sheriff, passed away. Oh, Rob, Rob.
No. No, it had to almost be the method, but I don't know where the doctor's at, where Dr. Jones was or whatever. I'm not sure. I I'm not, I'm not sure on that.
Okay.
That'd be the only property I think. I'm not sure what the plans is, I don't know.
Did you ever have, about Jimmy Jones?
Not heard anything else about Jimmy Jones.
When's the, uh, the, uh, part out? What's it called?
Well, I think they're waiting on some parts to, uh, connect water lines right now. So, um.
But they're moving along, aren't they?
Yeah, so I mean, everything on the state project has to be, as well as we would want it to be, has to be US-made products. So. There's a. Lengthy turnaround again, those. So there's a lengthy turnaround and getting those connections, I guess, waters. I think they're still planning on bioprene to be managed.
Good, good. Anything else? Motion to adjourn? Have a motion?
Second.
And a second, any discussion? During that, I'll figure, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.